Okay, again, thank you all for your patience. We are now recording live. Thank you for bearing with us on that.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Stonecrest. Now, welcome to the special call meeting of June 7, 2021, 6:00 PM. It is now actually 6:06 and we're ready to begin. At this time, we will have, we'll call this meeting to order and have roll call. It says by City Clerk Wheeler.
Good evening. I am filling in for Ms. Wheeler.
And you are?
Sonia Isom, Deputy City Clerk.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Councilmember Jimmy Clanton.
Here.
Councilmember Rob Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Jasmine Cabo.
Here.
Councilmember George Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Tammy Grimes.
Here.
And Mayor Jason Larry is absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Council, you have an agenda before you. There are four items on the agenda. One, it says extension of moratorium on car service station. Should that be a gas station?
Yes, you're right. That is a little discrepancy, but should be gas service stations.
Okay, good. And it says creation of community council, propose amendments to the zoning ordinance, and the fourth one is revocation of check sign and privileges. Did I cover everything? Does there need to modify anything?
Those are the items that we have for you tonight, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Great, thank you very much. Then we will start with item number one, extension of the moratorium on gas station or gas service stations. That would be Mr. Somerville.
Yes, I'm gonna share my screen real fast here. All right, yes, as we, as part of our last special call meeting, back, you know, back in last month, the mayor city council, of course, approved a 90-day moratorium on the acceptance of permit applications for gas service stations in order to allow time for staff to develop regulations to address the concentration of proliferation of service stations in the city. Now, that current moratorium actually expires today. That's the issue. That's the reason for the special call meeting primarily. Staff is working on getting the regulations to address this issue. In fact, we hope to have these draft amendments prepared by the end of this week in time for a, the agenda packet for the planning commission, and we've set up a special called meeting of the planning commission, which will be held on June 22, 6:00 PM. They will be taking up this action as well as some additional changes to text matters to the zoning ordinance. By allowing the 60-day extension, this will give, you know, we feel ample time to address the code issues. Because if planning commission does make recommendations on 22nd, you all could take up this, take action on this at your next regular scheduled meeting on June 28th. If for some reason either planning commission defers, making recommendation at the special called, or if you all want to take more time, that still leaves us July within 60 days, we should give ample time to take any recommended action. Your options are really pretty basic. Either we deny the extension today, in which case the moratorium be lifted and we'll start accepting applications. Or if you approve the extension, then that should give you, like I say, ample time in the June or July to address the issue. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, council.
Um, well.
Councilwoman Grimes?
Yes, 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 yes. Um, it is clearly laid out and for all to see. I'm, I'm in agreement with the, with the extension so that what I don't want to have happen is there's anything else or anything else that needs to be said or discussed that would have to cause for another extension. So I think we can do, can you hear me? I'm having some internet issues. Oh, no. Oh, no. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Tell me that my internet is unstable. It normally goes out when it does that. Okay. Um, so I'm, I'm, I'm fine. I was the one who asked for the moratorium. So I'm fine with the, with the extension to make sure that we, as a council, do everything that we know to do. Make sure that Mr. Somerville and his, his group has everything, and so does the planning commission, so that they can make a determination as to what is sent to them is indeed all that we need to do so that we don't have to travel this way again.
Anyone else?
I'm just in agreement with Councilwoman Grimes in reference to us extending it. So we'll make sure all things are in place. So we will move forward with this the plan that we have for it. So yes, I'm for the extension.
Mayor Protem, I don't have any issues with the extension of the moratorium. I do have some questions about what comes after this, but I can, I can hold that until after we vote. If that's easier, because more of my questions are related to what's going to happen between now and 28th.
Go ahead with it now.
Okay, so I understand that that Mr. Somerville, you'll present the recommendations to the planning commission on the 22nd. And then should they approve those or their recommended approval or whatever they recommend, we'll still hear something on the 28th. So do you have what you're, what you're going to present to them on the 22nd? Will we see that before you present it to them?
Yeah, so right now we are working to have the draft amendments ready for their packet by the 11th, which is this Friday, basically. And we will certainly send you a copy, all council members a copy, so that you have a chance to review it. In fact, if you want to talk with me maybe Thursday or Friday before they actually get posted, I'd be glad to walk you all through it as well informally. But that is our intention right now is to do that. Of course, there'll be a public hearing for the playing commission, and there'll be a public hearing before you all as well. So it should give plenty of opportunity for everyone to have the input and to go forward. This will make sure everything's done in proper order.
Right, so this is something that Councilwoman Grimes and I were discussing, because I wanted to make sure that we would have no hiccups by the time we got to the 28th. But if we haven't seen your draft recommendations before the 28th and have not had a group discussion about what those final recommendations should be, then I'm worried that we'll get to the meeting and we'll have some recommended changes, which would not allow us to adopt it on the 28th. So is there going to be a built-in time period? Maybe that's a special call meeting after, um, I guess to keep your time on.
Say, within the 60 days, you could still hear, take action in July if you wanted to. If you wanted to have another meeting, you know, before you take action, the 60 days would give you plenty of ample time to do that. And like I say, once the packets are prepared and everything, there should be plenty of time for us to sit down across the table and talk about whatever concerns you may have of the draft ordinance.
Well, I would just hate for you to give the planning commission recommendations that would be different than, because I feel like you'd have to have a public hearing all over again, right? I mean, like, you know, if you give them a draft and then we look at it and go, oh, no, we want to add this or take that away or whatever, then you would have to have another public hearing because you would have given a public hearing on a draft that we were not going to hear at the council meeting, right? So if you have a public, let's say you have five recommendations. And after, and so the planning commission has a public hearing on those five, and that's fantastic. And then we see them and we go, oh, no, we need, there are, we should have seven. So now that's different. Now that has to go back through the planning commission to another public hearing, because it's different than the one that was heard at a public hearing.
Right, right.
I'm not saying it will be. I'm just asking, if we don't see the drafts before the public hearing, then they could change, and I would hate for that to require a second public hearing.
But if you do, you do have another work session, I guess, next week. I mean, which would be after I prepare the drafts. We could, would you want to hear a presentation on it then? Before it goes to playing commission?
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be a way for us to, I'm trying to make sure that, and this could be totally conceptual. Maybe we don't have any changes. Maybe everything is spot on. I just want to make sure that we get to the 28th and we can have the action that we want without saying, oh, Jim, we didn't consider this, or what about that? And now the 28th is kind of not a wasted meeting, but we weren't able to take the action we wanted to. So yeah, if we could hear it at the public, if we could hear at the work session, then I guess that will inform what you present to the planning commission.
I guess my question to the city clerk or the chancellor, is it too late to insert that into the agenda for next week?
At the request of council, we certainly can add that.
Okay, all right.
And I believe this sounds like a council request.
Sure does. So we can do that.
Well, I want to, I want to hear from Councilwoman Grimes, because I want to make sure. I know this, I just want us to stick to the 28th. And I'm just afraid that if we haven't seen it before the public hearing, then it may change.
I don't think there's anything else to hear. We, we've had, you and I have had an extensive discussion. And so I like the fact that Jim said that, that the draft code will be available for us to review on the 11th, so that's even before our work session. So I'm, I'm, I'm fine. I'm absolutely fine. And it's not just about me. I'm just one vote.
And again, I'd be glad to talk with any of you before the 11th, if you want to have some input before, you know, we put together the agenda packet. So.
Okay, yep, that was my only comment about, I want to make sure that we've covered all the.
Understood.
With that particular portion of it.
Right. Yeah, like I say, my concern is just making sure we have plenty of time and to not hold this up any longer. That's why we're pushing to have the special call meeting go quickly through it. So, yeah, I understand.
Okay, anyone else? And Councilwoman Grimes, you ready to offer a motion?
I sure am, Mayor Protem. I make a, make a motion that we approve the 90-day, I mean, the 60-day extension on the gas station moratorium that was in effect since February the 7th of 2021.
I probably moved in second that we approve the extension of the moratorium that's already in effect for gas stations. Are you ready for the question?
No question.
Yeah, prepared to vote? All of those who are in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
I'm sorry, Ms. Mayor.
No question, or you have a question?
I have a question.
I am sorry, I interpreted that to say no question. Counselman Clanton has a question.
The question is for Mr. Somerville. You, in your preparation for a recommendation this coming Friday, what input have you gotten outside of council in regards to the directions as far as your recommendations? Or have you reached that moment yet?
Well, I've heard from several people, you know, of course, we've got the recommended changes that were offered by the collaborative firm and the draft code that you all saw before. I have received, you know, informal kind of advice from both Bernie Knight, I think I even heard some from Dave Marcus. You know, I've counsel, the city attorney's office I tend to reach out to this week. So I'm doing as much as I can to reach out to different stakeholders in the community and see different sides of the, of the story. So yeah, we've got, we've got, like I say, several points of information that I can draw from.
Thank you, sir.
And any other questions? Or any other unreadiness? Then all in favor of the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed to the motion will signify by saying nay, starting with District 1.
Aye.
District 2.
Aye.
District 3.
Aye.
District 4 is aye. District 5.
Aye.
Motion carries 5 to 0 to adopt the extension of the moratorium. Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is the creation of a community council. I believe that also goes to Mr. Somerville.
Yes, sir. If you recall also at our last special call meeting that last month, we talked about the importance of transparency communication with the general public about, you know, how we can improve the matter. And of course, the, the issues come up about creation of a formal community council. So it's similar to what DeKalb County has got in the past, and what several jurisdictions have done. What staff is recommending kind of is an interim or trial period before we intend to, you know, consider formalizing such a council is to just improve the overall policies or procedures that staff uses in communicating with the public as well as disclosing general information out there. What we're proposing is, is, is the, on the first Monday or third, I'm sorry, third Monday of every month the week following the work session, beginning as early as possibly June 21st, that a community council being held at City Hall. Of course, if City Hall is still closed, we might have to do it virtually. You know, the agenda would include reports from various city departments on topics of general concern. Of course, any kind of planning, zoning matters, as well as billing permit activity, you know, any kind of development activities going on with the general public, as well as anything that the city council might want to add to that agenda, you know, for recommending that probably at the work session, the second Monday of every month, that you all could make one of your items as part of that agenda to actually set the agenda for the community council meeting. The meeting would be facilitated by the city manager's office or their designated participation, you know, participants were granted an opportunity for a Q and A. We'll do every bit we can to send out general communications, both online, general advertisements, and of course, email to the general public. And of course, you know, part of this is just to find out what kind of interests there is in community. If there's a lot of interest going on here, if we can come up with an agenda that sparks involvement and better communications, I think that's, that's the primary goal. And if it does that, we'll try for about three-month trial period here. If we get a lot of participation going forward, then maybe we will formalize it as part of the city code of ordinances. And then, of course, present that to the city council for their consideration after that trial period begins. But I've heard a lot of interest in the community from a variety of sources, as well as the council about doing this. You know, it's, like I say, it's sort of an interim step to potentially formalizing this group. But what we're proposing right now is that we take an informal approach and we just open up this opportunity for the general public to, you know, see what all is going on in our community and to have some input and as well as give them an opportunity to ask questions of staff. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Council, questions?
I have a question, Mayor Protem.
Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Somerville. So every applicant would need to be prepared to, to present their application on the third Monday of every month?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, right now, you know, there's informal, they kind of set up those meetings anyway. But this would formalize it, create a central time and place where everyone can come together and hear, you know, applications of concern that are coming up.
Right, so they, so they would no longer schedule or plan the community meeting as required as a part of their application process. Now they're, now we will, in a sense, schedule that for them. And so they will be, they will need to be prepared for this, for this advanced, I guess, plan, calendar for the third of Monday.
Mm-hmm, correct.
And, um, ah, shoot, what was my other question? Um, okay, and so we would not, so since this is once a month, we would not limit the amount of applicants. It would, it would be all those that are at this stage of their application that would be on that agenda.
Yeah, generally, the way I view is like anything coming up for the July planning commission or for hearing would be probably heard in June. You know, it, you know, at the latest, I mean, they could even come in sooner if they have a concept plan in mind or something that can go forward that, you know, that they're willing to go ahead and present to the public. So yeah, I mean, right now, our deadline for filing is like the one month ahead of the planning commission meetings. That actually would fall in pretty nicely with that schedule.
Okay, and so we will make the, should we approve this? We'll make those adjustments to the application so that the applicant now knows that their community meeting is scheduled for them to be on the third Monday before they're scheduled to go before the planning commission, the month before, rather. Okay, okay.
You chose, I'll suggest, the third Monday?
Mm-hmm.
Reason for Monday?
Is there a reason for Monday?
Yes.
It, it just falls, I mean, it seems like the council's already meeting on a regular monthly schedule. So, no, I mean, it's, it's just, it seemed like it was an open date on your calendar, and one that seemed logical in terms of going forward with the playing commission that, you know, if there's a better date or a better time.
The reason I hesitate, the reason I hesitate is that the council meets on the second and fourth Monday. But we mentioned when we set that schedule that if there was a need to do a special call meeting, we would choose those alternate Mondays. And I don't know, for some people, Mondays are not the best days for meeting. I didn't know whether Tuesday would be a better day. Just curious to know why we suggested Monday versus some other day.
And there's no particular reason other than it was open on the calendar. But yeah, if it has a potential of conflicting with special call meetings like this one, then maybe we should say Tuesday. I don't know. And is that open on the calendar? I'm not, I don't have the city calendar up in front of me, but maybe it should be the third Tuesday of every month.
Well, that's just something we can take a look at. It's not a big deal.
Yeah.
Okay, and you spoke of having an option for Q and A after presentations have been made. Will the presentation be timed, a limited amount of time for present, I mean, for questions?
We haven't, we haven't set up a formal, you know, it hasn't been formalized to that extent. I, I, I think, you know, the intention is to have sort of an informal gathering with the community, just give them a chance for Q and A to present. So, I mean, it depends on the nature of the, of the, of the request. I mean, some of these things, matters do take a lot of time to present, but I would, also, I don't think it would take probably more than 10, 15 minutes probably for each presentation as a total. I mean, we could, we could formalize that and say, allow a certain amount of time.
I understand, you know, those are some things you might want to consider. How to control the media. Whoever's in charge of the media might want to consider that, to control. Should the music will be facilitated by the city manager?
Or they're designated. More likely it'll probably fall to me, but we'll see. We'll see how it goes. I'll leave that up to the city manager. It hurt discretion.
Honestly, it may vary depending upon the topics. It may vary. Sometimes it may be more appropriate for planning. Sometimes the city manager's office. Sometimes the economic development director. It just kind of depends on the topics that we have on the agenda that day.
And you also mentioned that the city council would have a hand in setting the agenda, maybe?
Yeah, I'm suggesting like that the work session, that, that work session you all could bring forward to staff, any agenda items you would like to be heard, you know, coming forward.
Okay, but, but not with just general rezoning text amendment?
Now, I would say, I think resulting in text matters by default will probably be on the agenda. It's more like if there's something of special concern coming up, you know, such as a special study or maybe a transportation issue or something that.
Now I follow you. I just, I got you, familiar with, just probably going to community council before the city council hears about it.
Yeah, yeah. And like, I know you're very familiar with the DeKalb County City Council procedures and stuff. Like I say, this is a very kind of step in that direction. It's not as formalized as that, but I think, I think my, one of our primaries is just the staff to find out how much interest is from the public and doing this on a regular basis. I think there probably will be, just based on whatever. But, okay, let's give it a shot and see what happens. This is what we're recommending.
Thank you. Any other council member?
I have a question.
Yes, Councilman Rob Turner.
Just for clarity, and that, really, it's to your point you just said, Mayor Protem, that you said that the council can add to the agenda?
Yes.
We can, okay. I just want to make sure. Okay. And after the three months period, what, you just bring it back to the council and then what we'll vote on and see the results as a result?
Yeah, I mean, if it really works, and then it is an informal basis, you know, we could at least maybe institutionalize that a bit through the city code of ordinances, or maybe just because of more formal policy. Or if indeed we want to go to a formal city council, very similar to what DeKalb does, that'll be the opportunity by which we can, you know, offer, you know, code amendments to formalize that group.
And so clearly what you're saying is that if we are so inclined, we should just, we can just go ahead and formalize it and say this is it, city council will be put in place? No trial period necessary?
Well, I mean, it, it wouldn't be in the code of ordinances yet. I mean, if you are going to formalize it real soon, again, we'd have to go to the planning commission for a review before it goes on. But, yeah, we can't, we can't certainly go that. This is just a step in that direction, if that's the way you all, if that's the council's desire to go forward.
Well, I know that whenever you put a new process in place, your best effort in terms of communication sometimes will need a little tweaking, and it could take
Exactly.
three months before the word gets around that community council is in place with a regular meeting. And I guess it would take three months to consider the meetings regular. So I could go either way with the trial period personally. But I'm guided by my colleagues. Anyone else?
Yeah, I do. I have a question. In regards to legal barriers, are there any legal barriers on a state level that would prohibit us from moving towards this type of an agenda for for those seeking results or what have you?
None that I'm aware of. Yeah, I mean, it's, many communities have sort of informal groups. And like you say, now that DeKalb County and City of Atlanta, they have very formalized groups that meet on a regular basis. So, no, I don't know of any restrictions on it at all.
Well, you know, in regards to making it, you know, a absolute requirement for an applicant to go through this particular process using this type of time period, given the, you know, the whole space, span of time so that we don't cross any lines as folk, as opposed to saying, you know, they're not given enough time, they're not given the ability to present, present their case in a, in a fair manner. But if, if not, I'm cool with that. I'd love it.
Yeah, I think that's part of the trial period, too, is kind of see how well does this work. And, and like you're saying, do we tell enough time for applicants to present their case? And are we getting participation from the community? And, yeah, you know, like I say, I think it's worth a trial just to see how it works.
Let me defer to our city manager. I take it that even the last item that we just voted on, as well as this item, has been routed past our legal department?
Uh, to be perfectly honest, I am not sure. I know in the moratorium, I think there was some discussion. I am not sure on this, this particular item. Now, Michael Hunic from Center Denmark, I believe, is on the line with us. Quite frankly, Michael, do you know if anyone from your firm has had any discussion about the community council item?
Yes, I don't believe that we've, we've seen this or have talked through some of maybe the full scope of what, what this is looking to do. But we certainly be glad to, you know, explore that.
So before we formalize this, it will take that route?
Yes.
Definitely, yeah.
Okay. And again, what you want us to do this evening is to do one of two or three things?
Well, honestly, it's, it's kind of a, almost an information. I mean, the way we've set this up is sort of an informal process. I guess we just want to find out from council if he wants to go ahead and try to hold a meeting on the 21st or somewhere around the period. Or rather, do you want us to bring this back to you, maybe at the work session or later meeting to actually more formalize the process? Really, it's at your discretion whether or not we want to go ahead and try to have a June meeting or go and just wait till July and give some more time to make sure everything's in order.
I just wanted to make sure that it says the recommendation, this is, this informal approach will be tried for a three-month trial period, after which time recommended changes in the policy and procedures of formal amendments to the city code of ordinance will be presented to the city council for their consideration. So right now, you're suggesting we adopt an informal three-month trial.
Correct.
Or we could just bypass that and go ahead and adopt it and let it run its course in terms of being put in place by going before the board of, or the planning commission and public hearing and so forth and so on. Those are our choices. Okay, council, unless I missed something, you have your choices before you. What is your recommendations?
So Mayor Protem, I want to make sure that I understand something, because some of that last part of that conversation led me to feel a different way. What this recommendation is, is just to organize, is to have the city organize a requirement that's already established. Right, so there, there's a requirement already in the application process to have, for the applicant to have a community meeting. What this policy in What this policy, and Mrs. Summerbell, please correct me if I'm wrong, but this policy simply organizes that required community meeting so that the city has some control over who, what, when, where and why. So we're not changing the requirement for the applicant, for the applicant. We're not making changes to the ordinance. We are organizing the requirement to have a community meeting.
And, and we're kind of expanding the agenda to include other items that the council or the community may want to hear about as well.
Right, well, just the fact that there is an agenda is already, I mean, it's just a part of organizing the community meeting, right? Okay, I, I wanted to make sure because we got into legal talk and I was like, well, we're not changing the requirement. You still have to have a community meeting. We're just organizing it on behalf of the applicant. So that we have some control over, like I said, who, what, when, where, why. Okay, because I, I just want, I felt like we were going somewhere different with that for a second. Okay.
Well, my point to the legal portion was now it's sort of like, yeah, you know, you're, you're required to, you know, go down the runway before you take off in an airplane, for instance, at an airport, but not all at once. So now we're putting everybody on the, on the tarmac all at once and aligning them up on a particular day where prior to now that wasn't in effect. So whereas we may not be technically changing the, the, uh, the, the fact that they have to have a community meeting, we are changing dates and regiment, you know, and how it is done going forward. So it's, it, it is certainly a little different. And that's, and you know, and that was my point in asking the legal question so that if we can get, you know, some input from council as to where or not, whether or not we should, you know, leave stuff back from the table a second and look at that. Or if not, I'm fine either way. So I just, just wanted, you know, receive what, you know, in the abundance of caution as opposed to just, you know, move right along. So again, just for the record, I'm fine either way, but I just want us to get to the same, I think we're all on the same page on this process. We just want to, I just want to make certain that we arrive safely.
Yeah, no, I, I totally understand it. We want to make sure there's fairness in the process of organizing the meeting. And I'm wholeheartedly with you. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't talking about legal requirements as far as requiring the applicant to still have a public meeting of some kind. But it seems like we're not. So I'm, I'm clear. I just, I wasn't at the moment, but I am now.
Anyone else? And council, what is your pleasure?
Mayor Protem, I make a motion to approve the three month trial period for the community meeting.
Who's the council?
Community council meeting? Sorry, for the community council meeting.
I second. It's been probably moved in second to approve the three month trial period for community council. Are you ready for the question? Here and no one ready?
Sorry, I have a question. I'm sorry. I want to, I want to, maybe this is semantics and tell me if it is because it's totally fine if it is. When we say community council, to me, that is a little misleading in what this is. So to me, this is, again, formalizing the community meeting, which is different from an established community council. So, which is maybe why I didn't initially say community council, because to me, this is not, we're not creating a community council here. To me, we are, again, organizing a community meeting required for the applicant. A community council is much different. So are we, are we saying that this is Stonecrest version of a community council? Or are we adopting a policy change to the application process?
I would hope that this is a community council, whereas we will select, nominate members to this council and they will have officers that will actually help to facilitate the meeting. And in addition to staff being there to help direct them, but this will be run by the council of community volunteers. And.
I'm almost positive that's not what this is.
Okay.
Uh, Jim, if you could, if you could go into the description that was in the packet, it seems like it had indicated some very broad functions. The possibility of very broad functions for this group.
This recommendation is not for a group of people, right? This is.
Well, it, it's a step in the right direction. I mean, what, what it does is it formalizes, you know, like you say, a process that kind of goes with the community meeting, the requirement that's already in place. It sets a time and place and agenda for that meeting. I think the step that's missing actually in here that I'm talking about is of course, like, is, is Mayor Protem is suggesting is the actual formal, you know, naming of the committee members that go forward. But it's good, I think it was, is Mayor Protem point out, or I think it's gonna take about three months to kind of set that up anyway. First, let's do a draft meeting or do it, hold the first meeting, see what kind of interest there is, find out what kind of participation we have. Over the three month period, we can formally appoint, you know, members of the, of the councils that go forward. And then it's in that three month period, it can be formalized if we have enough participation going forward. But right now, it, like you're saying, this is a formalization of the community meeting process and just a simple way of opening up communication and being more transparent with the community. And it is a step toward that more formal process of community council, Mayor Protem was pointing out, which also I think would take at least three months to probably set up, just to find who's interested in doing it, make up the nominations. And then that, into that period, you could actually form something. So that, that's, it's, I, maybe, maybe the best way, but it's not just a trial period. It's also ramp up period, you know, to get toward a community council. Hope that helps clarify.
Then you're correct. I missed something because I was under the impression that we were ready to start pulling members together and setting up election of officers and moving forward. In fact, I have people who've called me to volunteer. There's an interest in the numbers of the community council. So.
Mayor Protem, I don't, I don't think that we got to a place where we as a full council either agreed to do or not do the community council. I think, I think this, and you help me if I'm incorrect, Miss Summerbell, was a step in, in the direction of us testing the waters to see if we wanted a community council from the planning and zoning update retreat that we had.
This is a step in that direction, but I could say it's also a step in the direction of formalizing it potentially as well. Uh, I mean, I, I, I would love to find out how much interest and how many people are willing to be part of this as we go forward. And I think that's, this is the first step, the sole of our first meeting and see who shows up. And if indeed we, we have a, you know, necessary representation from each of the districts, I think that would be great.
Well, Mr. Summerbell, I, I read it. Uh, to finish off with what Councilwoman Cobble was saying, I believe at the twenty second of May, special call meeting, we directed staff to proceed with the formation of the city council. Uh, I'm sorry, the community council, as, as I recall, but we can double check that. Just wanted to put that in there. Okay, I apologize, Councilman.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor Protem, if I may, yeah, I, I think we actually gave directions to, to, to actually to start the, the process that, that, that it started here. And, and so when I saw this agenda item and I looked at the purpose, I thought that that's what we were aligning ourselves with. And I thought this was a good approach to that. It made sense to me that, you know, that we were going to look into the community council, but we were looking at these other options that would lead up to the formulation of a community council in some form, which we had not really specified at that particular time. But I mean, we, we tossed it back and forth and I thought we had so, somewhat came to a, a consensus that we should look at it and, and see how we should move toward it. And, and so when I looked at the purpose of this particular agenda item, that's the way it read to me. And I just wanted to make certain as we proceed towards the formulation or the formal formulation of whatever we have that will evolve into a community council, that we were doing it in the right way legally. And that's why I had the question about the legal side of it. So that during this trial period, that we will at least still be following the law, so to speak. But, uh, no, I, that's why, and that's why I'm in full support of it, because I think it was moving in the, the directions of formally putting together something if we need to, because if we go through this three month trial period and we find out that actually a method that may not include a particular version of the city, uh, uh, community council is not required, then we can move forward with that. Or if, if it's not working, then we can try something different. So at, at any rate, I just thought it was a good thing to, you know, just to, you know, see what, what could and couldn't work. Where we need to make changes, where we, where we may need to make additions or deletions and that we could have our, you know, what all of us want is that, that level of communication between our citizens and their input as well. You know, prior to it even getting to our planning commission and to the city council.
Councilwoman Cobble, that's your motion. Anything you need to clean up, we good to go.
Well, I, I want to clean up, I do want to clean the language up because I originally didn't say the word council purposely. And then I came back and said it and then thought about it and said I had a question. So I do want to change, I want to cling that motion up because I don't think.
Before you do, uh, city manager Jackson, you wanted to chime in.
Hopefully this helps and it seems like we're on two, talking about two different levels or two different things. One thing is that required meeting where the community has an opportunity to respond to requests for rezonings and those sorts of things. And then there is another level that asks for citizen input of various other activities that the government is undertaking. So Jim, I'm going to go back to the draft document that you put together that's in the packet, talks about recommended policies and procedures regarding the creation of community council. And see if that helps us get a better understanding of what you intended here. Jim, if you look at bullet three, it says agenda topics will include a report from planning and zoning on upcoming zoning and appeals cases, development activity, design concept reviews and planned relate, planning related projects. A report from the city engineer on upcoming transportation projects. A report from the building department on ongoing building activity and permit applications. Presentation by applicants on proposed developments of community concern, which is the small part. I think that's one thing that's currently required by your policy. And then it also mentions any items that the city manager or city council would like to add to the agenda. So Jim, it seems like as you wrote this, it was sort of a catchall, this community council would be a catchall for anything that the council, mayor and council are seeking public input on. Is that kind of what you had in mind?
Yeah, correct, correct. I mean, it's all in this spirit of being more transparent and open with the communication. So it's, it's, you know, it, it's a different, it's a little different than the traditional community council that's going out there. But if this gets us toward that path, I think this is the, you know, the right way to go. So it's, it is a broader, it is a broader meeting. It's almost, I mean, it's almost like a town hall meeting in some respects, you know.
I, I think this is overloaded to the point that it doesn't function like it should. But Councilwoman Cobble, you were about to fix your motion?
Uh, yes, but. So I, I mean, I was reading the recommendations and that's, that's where I got that it was a formalized community meeting, not a community council. So I'm afraid that if we continue to title it a community council, that it's going to continue to be confusing because it's not a council. It's an organized meeting for the applicants to present their projects. And we've invited the constituents to join on one day of the month. I, I, I don't, I think that if we continue to say council in it, that it's going to mislead what this actually is. So I want to, I want to amend that motion because it's not a community council.
But we asked for a community council. So what does it take to get a community council?
And, and maybe it helps us too to define what a community council is for you. If you can help us with that, I think that would help.
Then are we ready to, are we ready to act on this item?
I don't, I don't think that we, I don't think that we collectively decided that we want to go down the community council road. I think out of that last retreat, some of us did, some of us didn't, and we had not given direction to create a community council. I don't think that's what came of that retreat. I think what came of the retreat is we wanted to see what options we had to make it so that the constituents had a fair opportunity to hear the projects, that it was in, in a controlled environment that we could, we could ensure that the publications were out to the masses, where people weren't hiding the yard, hiding the signs, where there were ads in the bottom left corner of a newspaper that nobody could see. Like, we want us to generally have some control over making sure that our community was well aware of the community meetings that the applicant was supposed to hold. So I don't think that, I don't, I don't recall us getting to that point, Mayor Protem, where we were, we, we definitely, all five of us were not on board with the community council concept. Some of us were and some of us were not. So because of that, I think we asked him to give us an option that got us close to that until we decided that's the way we wanted to go.
Madam City Clerk, I know you can't work magic, but we have to look at that item to see what the vote was. Because we took action on that question. And I believe we voted and you said perhaps we didn't. So until we look at the minutes to see what we actually did, I don't know if we can take action here based on what we understand, I don't understand about what was done before.
Well, when, when you say we took action, we were at the retreat. We, are you saying we voted at a retreat on a Saturday morning?
Retreat, we had a special call meeting and we brought that item up on May twenty second, the special call meeting. And we gave direction to the, um, Mr. Summerbell.
Was that after the retreat or before?
After. That's just my recollection. But again, we'd have to pull the minutes. And I don't want to put a motion in the play that would conflict with the previous motion. For a, a, a year, we could defer this and deal with it at the work session some more if you're uncomfortable with what's being put on the table. That's one option. Councilman Clayton?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor Protem, I, to your point, I think this, uh, even if, for instance, we, if we did take action on May twenty second and that we voted to, uh, to develop a community council, I'm certain it wasn't defined. I mean, I, I don't think there was a definition, but even if it was, I think this would still be the steps that would make sense moving towards what we would, what would end up being a community council. And I think it's prudent at, at the very least that we do this. And hopefully it would preclude us from actually, you know, seating a a, a former community council based on the definition, you know, of, I guess, the majority of council. So, you know, I, I, hopefully in my, in my opinion, I don't think this would be hurtful if we, you know, since then, make a, I, I guess, if we're going to vote on it or not, but if we just give staff the okay to, to, I guess we do have to vote on it, to try this, I think we'll be moving in the right direction.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor that's been seconded and the motion is Councilwoman Cobble and she can either proceed with it, amend it, withdraw it. The pleasure is in her unless someone else makes a substitute motion. Councilwoman Grant?
Yes, I, I'm just going back to my May twenty second notes and I have circled very big planning commission versus community council. This is a struggle. So if that jars anybody else's memory, that's all I have written there. I don't know if anybody else has notes, but that circled very, very, very boldly. So I just wanted to make sure that was on record before.
Is that a quote or that was just your note?
It's my notes. And I referenced it as that. I went to my note on May twenty second. And I have planning commission versus community council. This is a struggle. And I circled it. So if that jars anybody else's memory, then maybe it does. I'm not sure. community council, this is a struggle, and I circled it. So if that jars anybody else's memory, then maybe it does, I'm not sure.
Okay, then let's dispose of this one way or the other. Councilwoman Cabal, what is your pleasure?
I'm going to amend the motion to approve the.
This is your motion, you can withdraw and remake.
Uh, okay, I have to withdraw to amend?
Well, usually you don't amend your own motion, you would withdraw and remake, but I I think either one will work. Go ahead.
Okay, well, let's do what we normally do. I'll withdraw the motion and offer a a secondary motion to approve the recommended policy changes to conduct a general community meeting on the third of, Monday of each month to satisfy the applicant requirement for a community meeting.
Counsel, is that clear? Waiting on a second.
I have a question.
I'm waiting on a second. Motion dies for lack of a second.
I have a question in reference to what Councilwoman just said.
Yes.
So with that motion that she was about to make, or that she did make, are we also moving in the still moving in the recommendations that were submitted by Mr. Summerbell? All this will still be in place in reference to what structure for us right now? All we're doing is changing the the language or changing the name primarily, or what are we doing primarily?
Yeah, so I, my motion was to approve what he recommended. Only thing I took out was the word council.
Okay, okay, that's what I.
Because it's not a community council.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, and the reason for my, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, go ahead, please.
Okay, the reason why I was hesitating was because you seem to be pretty specific and, you know, there was a, you know, so but if you, if you meant to include the recommendations on on the I mean, basically, the entire package itself for calling it a community council, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I just didn't want to read one through five. I just read number one and tried to summarize two through five.
What, no, okay, right, okay, got you, okay, no problem. I miss her, my bad. If if we have an opportunity, I would provide the second.
There you have me confused, because once a motion is withdrawn and the second motion fail for lack of a second, there, can you make the same motion again? I want to say, go ahead and do it. Everybody get called on it, but go ahead, since there's clarity, make your motion again.
Somebody else can make it and then we don't have to worry about, did we do it right?
The intention is just the word to a community meeting instead of council, am I correct?
Yep.
Okay, so that'd be the motion.
Go ahead then, sir.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the recommendation of creation of a community meeting as outlined by Mr. Summerbell in his report.
Second.
We probably moved in second on the item as described by Councilman Rob Turner on record. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor of the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed was signified by saying nay. Starting with District One.
Aye.
District Two.
Aye.
District Three.
Aye.
District Four is aye, District Five.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Mr. Summerbell, make us proud.
I'll do my best.
All right, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, again, another item came out of the special called work session on May twenty second, of course, was working on those text amendments to Zanyworth that are urgent. Today, I just want to give kind of a status report, we're not, we're not asking for any action, but I do want to say we're actively working toward these amendments you see here, topics of the gas service stations, which we just talked about, the personal care homes, the slump exemptions, you know, under the overlays, and we're as well, we're, we're working on corrections to outdated references to the comp plan and to titles and that sort of things in there, all those kind of really quick items that we feel like, you know, the planning commission can take up. Again, this, these will be the topics of the special called me, the planning commission on June twenty second. And again, we will have our draft agenda packets ready by June eleventh, and again, I'll be glad to talk with any of you beforehand if you want to go over any of those items. And it sounds like we will be making a report on this at the work session, at least on the gas service stations for sure. And of course, this will allow you to take actions as early as June twenty eighth, if it's the council's pleasure, or again, we can, you can take actions probably in July if you need more time to review it. But I just want to update you on that and make sure that you're all kind of clear about the process that we're proceeding with right now. Following this, of course, you know, we will start addressing different parts of the code as we discussed at our special call meeting. And I'll be working closely with the city attorney's office to make sure their thing is legal and done properly. And that really concludes my, my status report.
Counsel? Okay, so basically what you're doing is just giving us a a notice that you're still working on these items and have them ready by, well, for discussion on.
Well, we'll have the agenda pack, we'll have the draft items by June eleventh and, yeah, and going for, like I said, to the planning commission man, June twenty second, so. And we'd be glad to present them again in in detail if you want to at the work session on.
If all, if all goes well, we might take action on these on June twenty eight.
Correct.
And this will give us the, that opportunity for additional input on the gas station in particular. And I know that's going to require some more dialogue. And I'm not sure how much time we would have doing that session. But additional dialogue is definitely needed about the gas station, personal care home, and the special letting permit exemptions. Okay. Counsel? Then this item is submitted just as information? No action necessary. So here are no question from counsel, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, and that is revocation of check signing privileges. Madam City Manager?
Yes, sir, thank you. We bring this item to you in follow up to the ordinance change that you made at the last special call meeting. There was a provision written by the city attorney that addressed the issue of revoking check signing privileges when there is reason to believe that that is necessary for the protection of the interest of the city. So given that discussion and some of the things that have transpired over the last several weeks, we are bringing this item to you for your consideration.
Thank you, counsel. Let me just be clear that do you have before you the document that we adopted at our last meeting that is still just privileged on council to do this? That was a a resolution, was it?
It was an ordinance change, actually, and that ordinance did not make it into the packet, I'm sorry about that.
This was, this was letter C of that ordinance?
Uh, yes, it was the newly added portion.
Okay. One question about it in terms of when you invoke something like this, what's the notification process? I certify mail, telephone conversation, email?
I do not recall that that ordinance specify any formal notification process for some other violations, we have used email, email as a way to notify the the violator.
Okay, what about the longevity of it? That means just indefinitely, permanently, or a specified period?
Believe the ordinance did not address that. Mr. Hunning, do you have a copy of that ordinance in front of you to address that?
Yes, would you like me just to read all letter C?
Yes.
Okay, so it's notwithstanding the provisions of subsection A above, the city council may temporarily suspend or permanently revoke the check signing authority of any person upon evidence of misuse, theft, or misappropriation of city funds or upon evidence of unauthorized transactions or any activity that jeopardize the safety and security of city funds. If the city council suspends or revokes a person's check signing authority, the city manager shall notify the city's banking institutions and take whatever steps necessary to ensure that the city council's decision is effectuated immediately.
Okay, just to be clear, so what you just said you're gonna do, are you recommending a temporary suspension or permanent revocation?
If we do a temporary suspension, I would like counsel's guidance on the length of time for that. Is that three months, six months, et cetera, et cetera? I would like that. If if you don't decide to go with a full revocation, and I think this ordinance leaves it in counsel's discretion to determine whether it should be a suspension or a permanent revocation.
Counsel, your recommendation? I know that's one question, the temporary suspension or permanent revocation. But I think the recommendation would come from City Manager. Is that true? Should it not?
Again, the council does, the the ordinance, I don't think speaks to that. It just, I think, I think it just says the city manager will notify the banking institutions once the action has been taken by council.
Then we'll get it into motion. Counsel, any comments, questions?
Senator Brotem, I move that we accept the recommendation to revoke check signing privileges.
Permanent? We probably move in second to permanently revoke check signing, revocation of the violator of the check signing privileges? Can I add that? Okay. Are you ready for the question?
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
So based on what the attorney just read, the violator, I guess, basically the city council determines whether there is a violation and that determination is based on, I guess, information that is gathered by staff. Does it require a I don't know, indictment or some legal proof, or is staff work good enough? Particularly when we're talking about maybe specifically staff.
I have an opinion, but I will yield to our legal eagle.
Yes, so the the ordinance says that, you know, upon the present, presentation of evidence for any of the things mentioned previously, and so that has to be, you know, done, and and then it's up to the council at this time to if they determine by the preponderance of the evidence that a violation has occurred, then they can take action.
Thanks.
Anybody else? You have before you a motion that's been probably seconded, and you, if there's no other unreadiness, you're ready for the question? All those in favor of the motion was signified by saying aye, those opposed to the motion was signified by saying nay, starting with District One.
Aye.
District Two.
Aye.
District Three.
Aye.
District Four is aye, District Five.
Can y'all hear me?
We can.
We can now. Is it my turn?
Yep.
Yes.
Did you hear the motion?
I heard the motion and that's it. It's my internet.
And your vote is?
Aye, 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 aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Check signing privileges of the violator is now revoked. Madam City Manager, is there anything else?
Now, that is the last item I had for your review.
Good. Counsel, did I miss anything? Let's move the agenda. Here are none. I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
All right, second.
Probably move in second for adjournment. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, starting with District One.
Aye.
District Two.
Aye.
District Three.
Aye.
District Four is aye, District Five.
Aye.
We are now adjourned. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Good night, everybody.
Go Sixers.
Watch your mouth.